Good evening. Welcome to the Marion City Council Regular Session for Thursday, June ninth, twenty twenty-two. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Harper?
Here.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Ms. Atkins?
Here.
Mayor Abou Asli? Mr. Brandt?
Here.
Ms. Menzer? Here. Mr. Sterned?
Here.
Thank you. At this time, we will have a moment of silence. Thank you. And we have two proclamations this evening. And I forget who's okay. Ms. Atkins is doing the first one for Juneteenth. I don't see Steve.
I don't see Steve here, so we'll go it alone. All right. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January first, eighteen sixty-three, declaring the slaves in the Confederate Territory free, paving the way for the passing of the Thirteenth Amendment, which abolished slavery in the United States of America. And whereas, word about the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation was delayed two and a half years in reaching African-Americans in the South and southwestern United States. And whereas, many slave owners continued to hold their slaves captive after the announcement and up to June nineteenth of eighteen sixty-five. And whereas, June nineteenth became a symbolic date representing African-American freedom and has a special meaning to African-Americans. And whereas, it is called Juneteenth, combining the words of June and nineteenth and has been celebrated by the African-American community for over a hundred and fifty years. And whereas, it is a day meant to educate and reflect. Now therefore, I, Colette Atkins, on behalf of Will Brandt, Mayor, Pro Tem of the City of Marion, do hereby proclaim June nineteen, twenty twenty-two, as Juneteenth in the City of Marion, Iowa, and encourage all residents to become more aware of the significance of this celebration in African-American history and in the heritage of our nation and city. Yes, would you like to come up and make a few words? Come on up, Denise.
I just would like to say thank you so much for honoring us and also taking the time to be aware of this important holiday. So thank you so much on behalf of Marion City Commissioners and the City of Marion. Thank you.
Denise. Take your picture? You'll get to take the proclamation.
I'm gonna have to ding him on that.
Thank you so much.
Do we know who's? Do we have someone here for the proclamation for Pride Month? All right, come on up again. I'm so happy. I have to put my glasses on. Whereas, the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ-plus communities across the nation annually celebrate pride in their culture and community in the month of June. And whereas, the annual celebration of pride began as a collective protest for the rights of LGBTQ-plus individuals and communities. And whereas, the national tradition of celebrating pride in June is a tribute to the Stonewall Riots of June nineteen sixty-nine, which are remembered as the launch of the modern LGBTQ-plus rights movement. And whereas, the City of Marion recognizes the many LGBTQ-plus lives that continue to be lost each year in pursuit of living out their authentic identities. And whereas, the City of Marion believes in and stands for the values of inclusion, equity, fairness, and justice. And whereas, the City of Marion welcomes and accepts all people of diverse sexual orientations, gender identities, and gender expressions, and is proud to celebrate the contributions and culture of these residents. Now therefore, I, Sarah Menzer, on behalf of Will Brandt, Mayor, Pro Tem of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the month of June as Pride Month in the City of Marion and urge residents to eliminate prejudice everywhere it exists, recognize the many contributions that LGBTQ-plus individuals and communities have made, and to celebrate the great diversity of our community.
Wow. I would like to thank everyone for giving us this opportunity to have this proclamation on pride because I think all of us are learning more and more. And to be open and willing to learn and to express openness for this particular organization and the fact that pride is becoming nationwide, something that everyone should look at, I want to thank you on behalf of Marion for stepping up to the plate. So thank you very much for helping us celebrate Pride Month.
Thank you very much. This time, we now have a public forum. The section is for comments from the public on topics listed on the agenda that are not associated with the public hearing. Is there anyone here to address the council? Please come forward. State your name and address.
Good evening, Council, City staff. Renee Gadelia, three, four, seven, six, Barnsley Circle. I am here to speak in favor of my application for a noise ordinance waiver, I think, for a private party we're having in our backyard on August sixth. Some of you have come before. I hope you guys come back and I hope to see some more new faces here. Obviously, this is open to everybody with whom I served here. It's just an annual party for friends, neighbors, et cetera. And anyway, I hope to see you guys if it passes. Hope to see you guys there and over the summer. It's good to see y'all. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we will move on to the consent agenda.
All right, move to approve. Consent agenda as follows. Items A one through G four, Resolutions three zero six zero two through three zero six three six.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as follows. Items A one through G four, Resolutions three zero six zero two through three zero six three six. Discussion.
Just a question.
Go ahead.
For the for the event on August sixth, that thirty-four seventy-six Barnsley Circle Chief, I just wanted to ask, since that event is going on in parallel with another one on the same date, do you have sufficient staffing to cover that? Okay, very good. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. And motion carries. I just lost my place. Go ahead. I'll find out where we're at.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution number three zero six three seven, approving the renewal of a contract with Wellmark related to health insurance for fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve Resolution number three zero three six, three zero six three seven, approving the renewal of a contract with Wellmark related to health insurance for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Discussion, or do we have a presentation?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we have a little bit of a presentation. Good evening, Council. So this is in follow-up to the health and dental conversations that we had last council session. And just wanted to preface a couple of different things. Just a reminder, this is a bridge year. We are recommending just a couple tweaks. But next year, when we do renewal, we're gonna really do a comprehensive look this next year. Also, it's a little bit on that a little bit later. And then it's important to note that this is not only for this agenda item, but it's also for the next agenda item. We separated out health and dental. When we boiled everything down of as far as what we're recommending, it's really three changes and one's already been approved through the police contract. So we're really only recommending two different changes, again, being a bridge year. So when we talk about the health insurance, currently, as we mentioned before, we're at a forty thousand dollar specific stop loss. We are recommending increasing that to fifty thousand specific stop loss. And we are projected to have a six point zero nine fixed cost savings. That's projected. I did, for full transparency, I wanted to include the police union deductibles. Just again, this is slated to change during this renewal per the contract that's been approved. With this, we are recommending a six point two three percent increase to both the city and the employees. I do say city because we are self-insured and we are still paying the claims that we're incurring. And so this will help alleviate some of the costs that we're incurring through the different claims. The table right there is just to kind of give you an idea from a numbers perspective as far as where we're sitting. There's gonna be a little bit more comprehensive table regarding the premiums just a little bit later. So as we move on to dental, our current provider is through Wellmark. We are recommending a change through Delta Dental. There's no plan design change. We're still offering a base and buy-up for employees. Delta was just able to provide a little more competitive rates. With the competitive rates, we are projected to save about twenty-eight percent cost on this new plan. So as we then, last council meeting, we had to talk about, if you want to move to the next slide, roll. Thank you. A concern last council session was the impact employees. And so with these changes that we are recommending to, for this renewal, we are, the employees would have a six point two two percent increase effective July one. Again, that'll help cover some of those costs and be a little more sustainable long-term. For employees, since we're changing to essentially a cheaper dental plan, employees enrolled in the dental buy-up option will see a twenty-eight percent decrease to their insurance premium effective July one as well. I also wanted to reiterate the police deductibles. That is still an impact. Again, this was approved during the twenty twenty contract that was approved. As we talk about these changes, I did want to reiterate some of the things that aren't changing. Our cost share structure is still not changing. We still have the twelve, fifteen percent tobacco, non-tobacco incentive, as well as the insurance, the wellness incentive offered through our wellness program to have thirty or forty-five dollars off the insurance premium, depending on if they completed it or not. So those are not changing. Just wanted to kind of reiterate that. As we move to the next slide, I know this is gonna be a lot of information, a little bit. We did break it out on two different charts. The top chart is gonna be health and the second one is gonna be dental. So the top chart, this was presented during the budget presentation in January. This has the same information as what's in your memo. This is just presented just a little bit differently. And so you see there, you have the overall costs and with the employer. And then on the right is one of our plans for the employees. Again, it just kind of gives us an idea of what we'd be looking at as far as an increase goes. Same concept for the dental plan beneath. So the first two columns, the base dental and the buy-up dental, that's actually gonna be the employer premiums or the city premiums. Since employees pay zero dollars for the base plan, the last column is gonna be employee premiums for the dental buy-up option. And so you do see that twenty-eight percent decrease for the fiscal year twenty-three. So lastly, if we want to go to the next slide, I wanted to touch on the budget, just to be transparent. We did budget around three point six million dollars for both health and dental. We also budgeted to tap into the health insurance fund for about five hundred thousand. That being said, we still are carrying a three point two million dollar balance in our health insurance fund. And so as we talk about these changes, and I mentioned that this is a bridge year, what our next steps are is to really engage with employees, engage with PDCM, research different plan designs, see what's most applicable to the city, what better benefits our employees, and really help us from a long-term perspective. Another thing that we are, is on our list, is engage with PDCM to help establish a health insurance reserve fund policy. That'll all be this next year. And so for next renewal, we might have a few different options to search through. So are there any questions over anything that we've talked about today?
Go ahead.
Just again, I'll comment, I think changing from the forty K stop loss to the fifty K makes sense. Again, I was in favor of even a higher one, but I understand why the recommendation for the fifty thousand stop loss number for this year. So I think that's a good change. And certainly, the city employees still have an extremely good and reasonably costed out healthcare plan for them. So hopefully, they appreciate that. But I think you got a lot of work cut out for you next year because doing all that much work for healthcare plans and looking at different alternative designs, and Randy can attest to that, doing that on a citywide basis, that is gonna be quite a bit of work. So I hope you do well with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yep.
Thank you.
Terrell, could you back up two slides, I think? Okay, I think this one covers it. What I was just curious about is the twenty-eight percent decrease in the dental buy-up. In this case, we're working directly with Delta Dental, correct?
Correct.
Versus going through Wellmark.
Correct.
So we've, in essence, eliminated a middle?
Yeah.
Man?
Not really. There's two different carriers, like two different providers. And so Wellmark has their own dental plan that we enrolled in. Essentially, Wellmark and Delta are kind of competitors, if, for argument's sake.
Okay, all right. Thanks. I just was curious about that. Thank you.
Yep.
I just want to say thank you for the work on this. And it's kind of in our favor, obviously, take a look at this in the bridge year as you keep referring to on this. So it's gonna kind of frame that up a little bit for us next year and keeping this information fresh in our minds as we work forward. But I just want to echo the same thing. Councilman Jensen said, you know, congratulations, good job on this. And as you continue to work through this in the next year, it's just continuing on to make sure that we're providing the best product for our staff, for the city, and getting it as competitively priced as possible. So when we do all those, it ends up being a good product for everybody. So I just want to say thank you to you and Kirsten and all the members that worked on this. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? Thanks, Lucas. Seeing none, I guess we will vote on this one. All those in favor of approving Resolution number three zero six three seven, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve Resolution number three zero six three eight, approving the new contract with Delta Dental related to dental insurance for fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve Resolution number three zero six three eight, approving a new contract with Delta Dental related to dental insurance for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Your Honor, I move to approve Ordinance number two two dash zero six, establishing chapter one eleven A of the Code of Ordinances relating to electric franchise with ITC Midwest LLC. This is our final consideration.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve Ordinance number two two dash zero six, establishing chapter one 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 A of the Code of Ordinances related to electric franchise with ITC Midwest LLC. Again, final consideration. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve Ordinance number twenty-two day zero seven, approving an amendment to chapter fifty of the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding nuisance abatement procedure, and this is the final consideration.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve Ordinance number two two dash zero seven, seven, approving an amendment to chapter fifty of the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding nuisance abatement procedure. Final consideration. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Your Honor, I move to, excuse me, I make a motion directing staff to accept proposal and award contract to Farmer State Bank for banking services.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to make a motion directing staff to accept proposal and award contract to Farmer State Bank for banking services. Discussion, or do we have a presentation on this one?
We have a short presentation. If you recall, we had entered into a contract with U-Bank Capital to help consult us on this process. And just as a catch-up on where we've been, we had started with the investment RFQ and then afterward, we started on the banking. So you'll see kind of on the timeline here, we did issue an RFQ, a request for qualifications. It was a quick, easy, engaging letter with banks to nine local banks on February sixteenth. And then on, I'm not gonna say every single one because you can read it on the screen, but on March ninth, we actually followed up with a request for proposals to seven local banks. Those were Farmer State Bank, US Bank, Wells Fargo, Bank Iowa, Hills Bank, Cedar Rapids Bank and Trust, and Onward Bank. We then held some pre-proposal meetings during which the banks had a chance to ask any specific questions they had about what the city was looking for. They were also given the opportunity to ask questions. And then we actually provided the answers to all of those questions all at the same time so that everyone had the same information coming into the proposal on April twelfth. And then responses, we received six, US Bank, Farmer State Bank, Wells Fargo, Hills Bank, Cedar Rapids Bank and Trust, and Onward Bank, and held meetings with two finalists, which were US Bank and Farmer State Bank. And as we were going through this process, we had three main goals in mind. One, we wanted to have a smooth transition and implementation because as you can imagine, changing banks is a painful process. Two, it was very important to the city that both the location and the support is located in Marion. And three, we were looking for competitive rates. And so then you can see in the packet, the evaluation criteria was in your packet. Those three goals were definitely a huge factor in those. But here's kind of how it landed. Farmer State Bank scored a ninety-four with an earnings credit rate of point five one percent and the same offered for the money market rate. And I'll let you read down through the rest. So our recommendation is to proceed with Farmer State Bank. And I will say, we do have both Jason Neighbor and Callie Herring here if you have any questions about their proposal.
That's good.
Thank you.
Mr. Harper? Yes, just, I think of the seven that you named, I would have to say two of them are more local than the others. And I just think that the process with U-Bank to have a detailed analytical review of what we're doing and what services and capabilities are offered was a good way to go. So I'm really happy with the outcome.
I again want to thank Leanne and her department on this. We sit on, Grant and I, on a couple of subcommittees on this one. And again, a lot of work has been put into this. A lot of eyes have been kind of queuing this up. And I just want to thank all the banks and organizations that responded to the RFPs, RFQs. It's good to see that we've got interest in the local community, but I think at the same time, too, it's a great opportunity for us to, with interest rates where they currently are and where the current economy is right now, we hold a lot of assets that we have to be really, really careful with what we're doing. And we've got a fiduciary right on this. So again, congratulations on all your work on that. There's been a lot of effort and work. So I just wanted to make that note. So thank you.
Any other discussion?
I think the only thing that I will add is the actual contract will come at the next meeting.
Thank you. All right, well, let's vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. And motion carries.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution number three zero six three nine, approving Amendment number four to Task Order number one with Title Basin Government Consulting LLC to extend order timeline to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three and increase the not-to-exceed amount to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve Resolution number three zero six three nine, approving Amendment number four to Task Order number one with Title Basin Government Consulting LLC to extend order timeline to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three and increase the not-to-exceed amount to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Have a presentation? No? Okay. Discussion?
Question?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, what is our current amount that we're contracted for?
Current amount is three hundred thousand and it's currently through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. So we're bumping it up fifty thousand and extending it a year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve Resolution number three zero six four zero, approving the twenty-eight E agreement with the City of Cedar Rapids regarding the provision of transit service to the City of Marion.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve Resolution number three zero six four zero, approving twenty-eight E agreement, the City of Cedar Rapids regarding the provision of transit service to the City of Marion. This one, we have the presentation.
Just a quick summary, Your Honor. April nineteenth, we had a presentation to the council. We were directed to work with our partners at Cedar Rapids on a one-year agreement. The cost is a hundred thousand dollars below what we anticipated for the budget. We do have a meeting with Cedar Rapids and other transit partners on June twenty-ninth to begin the process to evaluate long-term options for our community. So anticipate future presentations before this body to come up with a really a comprehensive, long-term solution.
Thank you. Randy, go ahead.
Ryan, these twenty-eight E agreements, are these, I can't recall, are these twelve-month agreements or?
This one is, this one in particular is. We did talk to Cedar Rapids. We're contemplating renewal language in this one just to allow for our partnership to play out the work that we are gonna do. Just, we decided against it only because of timelines for budget process and when we have to get things in. So we chose not to do that. Anything that we develop over the course of our planning process would come back with a refined new twenty-eight E, most likely multi-year.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? I do have a question. Reading through that, it talked about how the City of Marion was responsible for the actual bus stops and shelters and whatnot. And at one point, we had some MPO money for shelters. And I think that we talked, maybe that was maybe on hold for something. What's the status of that? Or if you know.
So the dollars are allocated as part of the CNPO funding, I believe it's fiscal year twenty-five. So they wouldn't be till later years. And so at the time, we were also talking about doing the different type of on-demand transit. So if we went that route, then it was a question of, do we build bus stops? So that question is still out there, but we're not on the hook to build them yet.
And the CNPO is one of the partners that's part of this process. So they're aware of the conversations we're having with Cedar Rapids, Horizons, Lynn County Lifts, in including the state as part of this process.
So currently, twenty twenty-five is when those were.
I would have to look it up to verify. But some of the stops right now have bus stops. When we did the Tenth Avenue Side Pass, we purposely made areas so that the bus stops could be added to them in the future. So as we're doing those projects, but there are a few, like, for example, South Eleventh has a bus stop with a shelter. The one by, on Tenth Street, we've added the shelter because we had a donation, I believe, from the church on that one. So some of them are just a pad. Some of them are a piece of grass that they stand in. So. So it's, it varies where you are in the city.
Sure. And then since we're talking about transit, were there shelters that were damaged in the Dray Show? Yes, were they, have they been replaced? Would those be considered covered by insurance?
Those, if something's covered, if, if something is damaged, it would be submitted to insurance. I think just watching some facial expressions, we'd probably have to do some research to confirm. Kesha is, is our point person on transit, and so she's out. So we want to confirm before we answer.
Good. Question, go ahead.
I'm, I'm reading back through here, but just as a quick update, is there any piece in here that discusses expanding the current routes?
This is keeping the routes the same. The meeting on the twenty-ninth will begin the process about expanding, looking at different options, partnering with the micro mobility, so Horizons, to provide a supplement to help increase that. So the goal is to have a comprehensive conversation with, with the partners to come in and provide some, some options for council for direction, which would then be incorporated in a successor agreement.
So even beyond the micro transit options, even some of our population growth in certain areas of the community, if there's options to be able to?
That's, that's all. Exactly.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yeah, this week's Executive Committee for the MPO, the, there was a comment, it was a public comment that had been received relative to, I think, the Twixtown transfer point. That it's, that's outdoors, not sheltered? Okay, anyway, there was, I, I just wanted to denote that there was a public comment made about the fact that there's not a shelter at that location. So maybe that, that connotates an action item going forward, and I'll just, I'll look at that item again and follow up with the appropriate staff just to remember what that was. I'm picking it out of my brain right now. Tom?
I believe there are shelters, but there, it's not out of the elements completely.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. And I, I think all. Shelters in one bench.
I think the other comment was restroom facilities nearby.
At one point, at one point, they were transferring at the mall. And then they moved to the, there was a bank building in front of the mall on Collins for a while, and they had some of those amenities. And when, when that ceased to exist, we were kind of left to shuffle and figure out where. And Cedar Rapids and Marion kind of worked together, and that Twixtown was about the, the best we could do in a short term. Understanding that it's certainly not a great situation.
Okay, I just wanted you to have awareness that it was a, a public comment that had gone to the MPO.
Yep, appreciate it.
All right, any other discussion? Sitting on, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-two dash eleven, amending chapter eighty-nine of the Code of Ordinances relating to sanitary sewer by increasing monthly domestic and industrial user charges from four dollars and sixty cents to six dollars. This is our second consideration.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number two-two dash one-one, amending chapter ninety-nine of the Code of Ordinances related to sanitary sewer by increasing monthly domestic and industrial user charges from four dollars and sixty cents to six dollars. Second consideration, any? Mr. Harper, go ahead.
Yeah, could, Ryan, I think this is in your neighborhood. Can you recap what the driver to this is, just as a matter of record? Or?
Which, Ryan?
Either one.
Yeah, thank you. So this last year, we were notified by the City of Cedar Rapids that we were looking at a substantial increase in the wastewater treatment charges. The increase is essentially based on that increase. And so this will be an increase going from four dollars and sixty cents a cubic foot to six dollars. It's to cover a, a cost associated with treatment charges in excess of one-point-two-million dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just to follow up on that, we, as, as the council is aware, we've been having conversations with our partners at Cedar Rapids, as well as Hiawatha, on our, our twenty-eight E agreement as it relates to sanitary sewer charges moving forward. We do plan on putting a little brief update in the in-focus tomorrow. We had a very productive meeting. We're continuing to analyze data, specifically the flow, the, the flow meters that we have. It's been very productive acknowledgement on, on the part of Cedar Rapids that the, there is a need to dive deeper into the data. We've also asked for some clarifying, clarifying questions about the, their planned plant improvements. A lot of that improvement is to replace outdated facilities, but then also plan for future growth. So the City of Cedar Rapids has, has asked the, the City of Marion for population projections for twenty years out, which we're working with our consultant on getting to them so that we can continue the, ensure that we have the capacity at the new plant for our continued growth. We do have, under our current agreement, we do have an obligation to get them that information by the end of June. Because conversations have been productive and ongoing, we have requested that that be extended. There's a tentative agreement that that be extended by six months. Our partners at Cedar Rapids are going to be talking to their city attorney, as well as council, about what formal action needs to be done and memorialize that. But Ryan, jump in and fill in the blanks if I've left any. But the, the conversation has been very professional, very productive, and we're making progress. We've got our next meeting set up, I believe, August second or eighth.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
So just to recap that, first off, I'm, I'm really glad this level of discussion is occurring with our partners. So it's externally induced, and then we are taking direct action to do an analytical review of the systemic drivers to everything so that we have a refined basis, which we move forward with this service provisioning for our residents. So this is all good.
Thank you. And just not to belabor this point anymore, but Leanne in finance has also been doing revenue projections or modeling, budget modeling with DA Davidson, so we can really get a complete picture. Do our best to project and, and prepare for anything and be as transparent and as communicative with, with our community as possible as we go through this effort.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number three-zero-six-four-one, approving contract with polyvinyl roofing for the roof replacement of the existing public service maintenance facility and authorizing payment in the amount of four-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three-zero-six-four-one, approving contract with polyvinyl roofing for the roof replacement of the existing public service maintenance facility and authorizing payment in the amount of four-hundred, four-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars. Any discussion? Yes?
Question? Ryan Miller, this time. What, what's the timeline or the schedule for this work to be completed?
So right now, we have the schedule set at one-hundred-and-fifty calendar days for the work to be completed. The start time's going to be contingent on materials. That's the one we're fighting right now. With this type of roofing system, if the council remembers, this is a single ply membrane. We think that material availability will not be as big as issue as a steel roof. And so I have been told potentially we'll start work within four weeks. However, with the world today, we just don't know construction materials. So again, one-hundred-and-fifty days, our goal is to get this building wrapped up by winter.
Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number three-zero-six-four-two, amending the urban forestry utility fee to per, to a per-dwelling unit charge for residential properties and a per-metered account charge for non-residential properties effective July one, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three-zero-six-four-two, amending the urban forestry utility fee to a per-dwelling unit charge for residential properties and a per-metered account charge for non-residential properties effective July one, twenty-twenty-two. Do we have a presentation? No, doesn't look like it. Discussion? Yes?
Can you just remind us what the urban forestry utility fee is for?
Yeah, so this fee covers essentially all the assets within the city archery and helps fund our urban forestry division. So it pays for our city arborists and our staff to help maintain these city assets.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number three-zero-six-four-three, approving purchase of a container from A-one Mobile Storage Service for the storage of the peace tree and holiday lights and authorizing payment in the amount of six-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three-zero-six-four-three, approving purchase of a container from A-one Mobile Storage Service for the storage of the peace tree and holiday lights and authorizing payment in the amount of six-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. Any discussion? Yes, Randy?
I just have a question. Obviously, this isn't a budgeted item, but can you tell me where we will be pulling the funds for this?
So this will fall into next fiscal year, and we haven't taken a deeper dive. But once we do go through the budget process, one of the exercises we do is, is look out for year and estimates. And so we'll be pulling, we'll likely pull something out for, for that.
I see, okay, great, thank you.
Yes?
Seth, in looking at that, buying the containers in round number sixty-four-hundred dollars, and I understand the desire to do that, so it gives you a permanent facility to keep all of the various decorations in. But as I looked at what was in the memo, on a non-purchase basis, renting the storage container for eight months of the year would end up being, I think, if I did my math right, inclusive of the pickup and drop-off, would be sixteen-hundred-and-forty dollars per storage season for eight months, which seems, in order to purchase, we, I think we'd have, in essence, a three-and-a-half to four-year payback. Is, is this a, a structure, this storage container, that you'll have long-term use for? Not only for the holiday lights, but perhaps additional lights and, and decorations that would be supported? I guess what I'm trying to understand is, what's the long-term value versus just renting it on a seasonal basis?
Yeah, so just to clarify on the seasonal, so on the monthly basis, you know, it'd be eight to nine months, but it's twenty-eight days specifically. So eventually, you'll get an extra leasing through the twenty-eight days. But the plan is, is we'll be able to fill up half of it right now with the peace tree and then what we have. And so we're, we're trying to project the growth as, as we add on more lights to Seventh Avenue and, and the holiday light program. So our thought process was that we're long-term, that this would be able to withstand that.
Okay. All right, so it's an investment in, in a sense for that storage reason?
And I, and I would also just note, too, that these, these lights that we're installing, the peace tree, was a forty-eight-thousand-dollar investment. And then last year, we invested twenty-five to thirty thousand for those lighted trees and for the lights in the uptown, too, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry to seem a little picky, Yoon, but the fact that it wasn't budgeted just kind of caught my interest.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, thanks.
Anyone else?
I just made a quick comment on it. I, I see the, I see the point of purchasing it because I, I'm not aware of any CIP projects for expanding storage at the Parks Department, any facility, correct? No, there, there is not, no.
So it's going to be utilized not only for this, but for other things going forward, which helps alleviate some of the storage issues that you have currently, so that it's not in one of the buildings?
Yep.
Anyway, anything else? And we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number three-zero-six-four-seven, approving the purchase from Lifetime Fence Company regarding netting barrier replacement at Starry Park and authorizing payment in the amount of seventeen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three-zero-six-four-seven, approving purchase from Lifetime Fence Company regarding netting barrier replacement at Starry Park and authorizing payment in the amount of seventy-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Yes, Your Honor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-two dash twelve, amending chapter sixty-three of the Code of Ordinances establishing the speed limit on Seventh Avenue as twenty miles per hour from two-hundred-and-fifty feet west of Sixth Street to Fifteenth Street and Tenth Street as twenty miles an hour from Seventh Avenue to Eighth Avenue. This is our second consideration.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number two-two-one-two, amending chapter sixty-three of the Code of Ordinances establishing the speed limit on Seventh Ave as twenty miles per hour from two-hundred-and-fifty feet west of Sixth Street to Fifteenth Street and Tenth Street as twenty miles an hour from Seventh Ave to Eighth Ave. Second consideration. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number three-zero-six-four-four, approving contract with Anderson Bogart Engineering and Surveyors, Inc. regarding the central corridor improvement, Seventh Avenue, from Twelfth Street to Twenty-Second Street project and authorizing payment in an amount not to exceed five-hundred-and-five-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three-zero-six-four-four, approving contract with Anderson Bogart Engineering and Surveyors, Inc. regarding the central corridor improvements, Seventh Ave from Twelfth Street to Twenty-Second Street project and authorizing payment in the amount not to exceed five-hundred-and-five-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars. You have a presentation? Okay, go ahead.
So I wanted to briefly discuss some of the good and bad things that have happened recently. So as some of you may recall, recall that Iowa legislation approved the swap funding was, was a good thing that they did. So basically, they would take federal dollars that we would normally get as part of a project like this, and they would keep the federal dollars, and they would swap dollar for dollar and give us state dollars instead, which had less hoops, less strings attached to them. However, because the IIJA or the infrastructure bill passed, there are now too many federal dollars coming into the state that they can no longer swap them. So this will not be a swap project. So at the time of writing this memo, it was a good indication that it was not going to become a swap project. Since then, we've actually had meetings, and they have told us it is not going to be a swap project. So this will remain federal, so it will stay as a tap project. So with that, there's additional things that we need to do. That's why we're putting the contract in now, even though we have nine-hundred-and-three-thousand, that'll, that's in fiscal year twenty-four, and almost two-point-four million in fiscal year twenty-five. But because of the processes that we have to go through to meet the federal guidelines for that money, we need to start that process now. So in the council packet, there's the, the schedule that Anderson Bogart laid out. You can see that it's step after step that we have to go through. And so that's why we're bringing this now to get this process going, so that when this money becomes available, it's shovel-ready, and we can move forward with the next phase of the project. So it's going to take some time to do all this on the backend. So you're going to see payments coming through and no progress happening, but there is progress happening. It's just in the background. So just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that with the swap and the federal funding and that situation that we are now in. So good and bad thing, but it's just the situation that we're in, that the state can't swap every federal dollar that now is coming in because of the influx.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mike, since we're talking about this now, and you, you answered one of my questions, and that is, how far out is this going to be done? And you answered that question with fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five. But can you give us, I, I was not on city council when all of this major project was approved. Can you remind us how much? how much of a reconstruction there's going to be from Twelfth Street to Twenty Second Street, what changes there'll be?
Yeah, so it will be a complete re-road reconstruction. It'll go from a four-lane cross-section that's out there today to a three-lane cross-section. It'll be new sanitary storm water main, all that will be
Everything.
Brand new.
Okay.
It won't be as fancy as the Seventh Avenue that we're doing here, but there are some amenities that are put in there as a portion of that.
But all of the above-ground wiring we see now will all go below ground as we continue to proceed on that Seventh Avenue project?
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Grant.
Well, if the utilities are, the electric is going underground, that's that's a great thing visually. Two questions, and it was really stimulated from the schedule. It, there, there was some work scope archaeological investigation, and then I think there was a parallel citation for historic building review. It does, does our historical preservation commission get involved in any of that at such time that scope would be executed?
No, so Anderson Bogart has a subcontractor that does that work. Not to say that that committee doesn't see that report when we get it done. So we did a similarity one when we did this project up here, and we actually found artifacts, and those were given to the historic community as well to keep those. So it's a process that you have to have professionals do that that are trained to do that type of work.
Okay, but if they find something that will be a point of information to the commission. Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Let's piggyback off what Steve commented on the the, for those listening and in attendance, that that project is spring of twenty twenty four to start, correct?
So the DOT's fiscal, so are the City of Marion's fiscal year starts July one. The DOT's fiscal year starts in September. So we were not able to expend any of the federal dollars until September. So likely, it won't be till April of twenty five.
Gotcha. Okay, and then, again, for those that don't know, this is not only, it's not stopping at twenty second, it's eventually going to go all the way down to twenty seventh.
Eventually, as a separate project.
Yeah.
But we're stopping west of that intersection, so we won't install anything east of that intersection. And in the future, twenty second gets extended, but we didn't want to have it in this project. And this isn't the full eighty twenty, but this is a large chunk of the the project that we're getting from the MPO.
Thank you. All right. We will now vote. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries, and then the next item, resolution three zero six four five has been removed from the agenda, just to make note of that. So we'll move on to F two.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number three zero six four six approving the issuance of a building permit prior to approval of the Hunter's Field thirteenth edition final plat for property located north of Connection Avenue and west of Winslow Road.
Has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three zero six four six approving the issuance of a building permit prior to approval of the Hunter's Field thirteenth edition final plat for property located north of Connection Avenue and west of Winslow Road. Any, you have a presentation? Go ahead.
Just a quick note, on the agenda, it does say twelfth edition, and and it should be thirteenth edition, I noticed that. Apologize for that mistake, but relative to the request, you know, these come in on occasion. We do a revert, we do a review internally to ensure there's no health and safety issues on the site with issuing a permit prior to final plat. It is certainly something that we don't encourage, and we would would like to think of it as the exception and not anything close to a rule. It does create some difficulties in us and tracking. We can't, we can't track anything in the city through permitting until it is a lot of record, understanding that there are constraints, and sometimes things happen that that get the developers behind. We certainly have noted this with this individual, as we have in the past with everyone that does make the request for these. But I think it's just important to know that there's no health, safety concerns. The, when you drive by where the location is, it's north of Connection, you wouldn't even know there's not a platted lot because it's, I believe there's a house on either side. So a lot of times, these happen in the middle of a field, and there's no properties or development around it, and it's very difficult for us to access. In this instance, we do have access, and and the departments have reviewed it, and they can, we can, we can serve the lot. It's just, I just want to highlight that it isn't just something I want the council just to pass over, like it's an everyday occurrence, but it is something that we do review to ensure before it gets here that it's something that we can handle in-house if it is approved by the council. So anyway, it's, I just wanted to make that point. If there's any questions more on that, I can, I can clarify.
Thank you. We'll start with Randy.
Tom, is there any reason, or can you explain to us why we would not let this run through its normal course? What is the, and I apologize, I don't, I don't have the details in front of me in our council packet. If this is not approved, what what's the rush for taking this out of order?
So the developers generally, they'll they'll plot the property, they get a lot of record. Then they they come in to get a permit, that permit's tied to the lot. In this instance, there's no lot of record, so it has not been final plat. There's a preliminary plat, and there's, I believe there's a final plat for on either side. We have seen the final plat, so they've actually provided it to us. We get really nervous if we don't have the final plat at all. So we do have the plat, we've reviewed it. It's my guess that you guys will see it probably in one meeting or two, but you can imagine where at that time of year with, when you issue a permit, you can start construction, you start to get things lined out. Two weeks to the next city council meeting for a final plat, or four weeks if it's not in order, can cause delays in the construction of homes. You know, we're in a situation where we have a housing shortage, so in, you know, working with folks, we try to do when we can, and this is one that, while we don't necessarily like to see it happen all the time, there's no health, safety concerns, and we can handle this, the the issuance internally.
And this is the location that's directly adjacent to that road, correct?
Yes, serviceable right off it.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And I believe, and the departments have weighed in on it, and we, you wouldn't have the recommendation you have unless we felt we could handle this situation.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
Go, Grant.
Yeah. You might answer it.
So I, I, to this point of discussion, I see the petitioner does say in in their letter, final plat of said subdivision has been created and submitted to city for city staff for review, which supports, which I think you said, Tom. What's the timeline for that review to be completed?
So we do an internal review, we'll have a subdivision meeting in two weeks, so we review that plat. With this one, we'll probably expedite the review and try and get it. It's a two-lot final plat. It really isn't too terribly difficult to push through for a review. So we would likely have it on the next agenda. I can't guarantee that. I haven't looked at it myself to understand if there's any major issues. But a two-lot final plat is pretty straightforward.
Okay, so our reaction tonight would really be kind of accelerating by two to maybe four weeks.
Correct.
All right.
So, Tom, given that everybody in Iowa knows what the construction season is, what valid reason did he give that he didn't have it in here months ago?
I, I don't know that I have a answer to that.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Yep.
So as I, as I'm looking at the map, in the first part of the memo, it where it outlines this kind of irregular lot, because it looks like the lot kind of behind it is longer than the other ones. It looks like, so it kind of stretched out into a weird configuration. It's causing this one to be more of a the shape of Utah. How, what happens to the lot to the east of that and north of that existing house that would, you know, be up against Winslow Road? How does that lot then get access off of that dead-end road just north of it?
It it does.
Okay.
That's correct. Yep, and that is included in the preliminary plat, and there were that's all been planned, per se.
So that will be
Preliminary plat that illustrates that.
So what's left will be one lot, or whether to come down, and you could potentially divide that?
That'll be two lots.
That'll be two lot.
Yep, if you go to the next page, it'll show the preliminary plat.
Okay.
It's highlighted in red.
Tom, back to the fact that this final plat has been submitted and is in your department's possession. Has that been looked at at all in terms of preliminarily making a determination of its sufficiency, or haven't you looked at it at all?
From what I understand, it's consistent with the preliminary plat, and that's, that's the primary concern that we would have is if it deviated from the preliminary plat, and it's, it's a two-lot subdivision. What we need to do is just ensure that the details within are appropriate. So that's just checking to make sure that all the math on the lines line up, and we don't have gaps within, so it it shouldn't be too terribly difficult to to process.
Okay, thanks.
And I always make this comment when we have one of these, that if they do start construction, and then some things are found not to be done according to how the final plat will be, they have to go back and change or fix or redo whatever they've already done, correct?
Yeah, we, and we will evaluate, like if they brought in a permit, or when they bring in the permit, we will still evaluate it against the final plat that's being submitted and processed. So that's, that's critical pieces, I said. We generally have a lot tougher problem in looking at these if we don't have a final plat. So, yeah.
Whether they do something that's not, we'll say to code, or however the final plat's going to read, they have to change it.
That's correct.
Beyond their dime to read, to fix something that was done.
That's correct.
Okay, go ahead, one more.
One more, one more from me, I promise.
For the rest of the night.
Promise everybody. It seems to me that these are relatively rare. I I can remember maybe two or three of them since my time on council, and given the fact that this is a variance to our standard process, I would like to see going forward that if a variance is requested, that the petitioner presents to us to compel us to vote favorably for it. I'd like to, I'd like to hear from them the necessity to do this, if at all possible. Now, obviously, this is a simple development, relatively speaking, but I think if we're going to have a process variance, the petitioner really should should come forward and 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 speak directly to us. So just a modification going forward.
The petitioner I don't see in the audience was made aware of the meeting, and that this would be on the agenda.
All right, anything else? Anybody but Grant? Seeing none, we will vote. All right, so all those in favor approving resolution number three zero six four six, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
No.
Four ayes, so motion carries.
So sorry, we're with technology here. Mayor Protem, I move to approve ordinance number twenty two dash zero eight approving a request to rezone property located west of Alvernet Road and south of Prairie Trail, Marion, Iowa, from under, undesignated to SR two suburban medium-density, single-family residential integrity custom homes and corporate. This will be final consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number two two dash zero eight approving a request, request to rezone property located west of Alvernet Road and south of Prairie Trail, Marion, Iowa, from undesignated to SR two suburban medium-density, single-family residential integrity custom homes, final consideration. Discussion. Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve ordinance number two two dash zero nine approving an amendment to section one seventy six point five zero dash twelve of the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding sidewalk cafes within the U one, U two in UTC one zoning districts. This is our final consideration.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number two two dash zero nine approving an amendment to section one seven six point five zero dash one two of the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding sidewalk cafes within the U one, U two, and UTC one zoning districts, City of Marion, final consideration. Discussion. Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve ordinance number twenty two dash ten approving an amendment to section one seventy six point five two of the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding the use standards associated with sidewalk cafes by the City of Marion, and this is the final consideration.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number two two dash one zero approving amendment to section one seven six point five two of the Code of, of the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding the use standards associated with sidewalk cafes, City of Marion, final consideration. Discussion. Go ahead.
I just want to say, I appreciate this moving through, excited for this, long time coming, and I know our community is forward to the opportunity and what this will bring to our uptown area for just the gathering and being together again after a few years of that, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Anyone else? We will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries. We're on to other department discussion. First one is a discussion regarding the draft fiscal year twenty three, twenty four budget calendar.
Thank you, Your Honor. I wanted to start just by recapping back to our budget work session. If you recall, we had left that meeting with the items that you see on the screen before you as items that we needed to work on over the next year. As you can see on the list, we have already formalized our comparable city list. We are currently on the agenda, the urban forest revenue per dwelling fee. We had updated the hotel motel policy. We are currently in the process of working with DA Davidson on the budget modeling tool. I am also, as part of that, having conversations with DA Davidson regarding tax increment finance. In fact, that is the first step in looking at our general fund budget and our tax levy. But what I'm actually here to talk to you about tonight is revamping the budget process, and the first step in that is the budget calendar. While I'm not going to actually present the details of the budget calendar tonight, we will save that for the next set of council meetings. We did want to call it to your attention that it was included in the packet. A little birdie had pointed out to me that I included three pages instead of just one. The first page is the actual budget calendar draft that we have put together. The second two pages were actually notes that were taken as we were whiteboarding. So we actually whiteboarded several times with staff members in the development of this calendar, working to align both the strategic plan and the capital improvement plan, as well as taking the calendar in front of executive leadership team. So as we've worked through all of those, we're now bringing it to the city councils level for consideration, wanting to give it to you well in advance of the meeting where we're actually going to talk about it, so that you have time to breathe it in. Any questions today that can be answered? I did point out also in the packet that you won't see the five-year financial plan specifically called out in the budget calendar, as we are working on developing that over the year.
Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll just comment. I think it's a great step forward, so I commend your department and everybody putting this together. I think everybody is now working from the same page. Everybody understands well in advance, and I know every department is busy. They've got their own responsibilities and projects to manage. But everybody now knows exactly when different aspects of that budget are due. It helps us moving forward. The budget is not a simple process. It's a very complicated process, and pieces need to be done in a timely manner. So I think this puts everybody on notice what's expected and when it's expected. So to me, this is a huge accomplishment for everybody going forward, and I think everybody should benefit from it.
Okay, great.
I support what Steve says. From my vantage point, this is the quantum leap ahead and really provides a structure and cadence to move through this complex process. So thank you, Leanne, for this work and the leadership. So thank you, Leanne, for this work and the leadership day.
Thank you. I appreciate you letting us know about the extra pages because I was a little confused, I was trying to figure out what those were meaning. But I think that's looked fantastic, having that all spelled out, so appreciate all the hard work on that one. And nothing else, we'll move on to the next one, discussion and direction regarding public transit fleet. Go ahead, Ryan Miller.
Hey, Your Honor and Council, thank you, it's been a while since we talked about this, last two years have been a little busy for us. So we're here to discuss kind of status of the fleet and moving forward with getting it replaced. First, I want to give you some background about the profile and why we're here and what we're going to be doing. So we have about forty pieces of roadway equipment, that's what we call on-road equipment. Those are your utility trucks, snowplows, things of that nature. And we have sixteen pieces of what we refer to as off-road equipment, that's your big loaders, backhoes, skid loaders, things that we don't drive, really drive around the city on the road as much. Right now, the average age of our equipment is sixteen point two five years old, that's how old they are. And so in our language, that that means it's been rough sledding on maintaining these vehicles. That's that's pretty old for a city fleet. And so this last year really hit us hard, went through maintenance, through winter operations. And so we are still working towards a fleet acquisition this next fiscal year coming up, so for the next slide. So this was planned, the the blame it of our fleet replacement was planned. As some of the council members understand, we wanted to acquire a uniform fleet, the same chassis profile. That way it would help us with maintenance of the fleet, same filters, things like that. The other thing that we're running into too is the maintenance of new diesel engines. Can you go to the next slide, Carol? So some background on this, back in two thousand and seven, federal legislation introduced the Clean Air Act. And what this was, was a requirement to reduce diesel emissions significantly after all two thousand and twelve models. Well, what what really happened here, the manufacturers were not ready for this at all, you can go to the next slide. And so when they put together an answer for this, the technology, it really wasn't well thought out. And so this is an example of one way to clean up the diesel emissions, it's called an EGR cooler, EGR technology. And basically what it does, it takes the exhaust, reintroduces it into the engine and burns it off more, okay? These things are very high maintenance, we go through a lot of these, they're about twenty-five hundred dollars a pop. It takes us about sixty-eight hours to replace these. In addition to this, having this technology, we have to go through what's what's called a regeneration cycle. And so when we're out plowing snow in the middle of the night, light will come on, we have to stop, take that thing up the highway for about an hour and run it. Okay, so really clumsy technology, we have not been happy with it, and it really does impact our maintenance operations. So you go to the next slide. So years ago, we identified compressed natural gas fueling systems as a solution to that, that's going to reduce our maintenance. So when you utilize compressed natural gas, you don't have that technology, you don't have those EGR coolers, they're not necessary because they burn very, very clean. And so we've had that identified for some time, you go to the next slide. So fast forward to today, just like everything else, it's very hard to get things and everything's much more expensive. And so when we reached out and started establishing our schedule again, we realized that the delivery of a CNG chassis is twenty to twenty-four months out, that's a long time. In addition to that, the compression station, the station that that gives us the fuel, takes the compression, we cannot get a firm date on delivery, it's over a year and a half to two years. And then the service, basically they were very honest with you, the the technical support for those stations, there's not a lot of people available to do that, so that made us very nervous, you on the next slide. And so the other thing is cost. So we put a project estimate together back in fiscal year nineteen, just under two point five million dollars to go to compressed natural gas. The project estimate now, based on what our vendors have quoted us, is over five point seven million. And so any return on investment is pretty much wiped out at this point. Everything's gotten much more expensive now. What's really driving this is the availability of diesel chassis, manufacturers are putting those up first before the CNG chassis. It just, there's a waiting list, okay? So last winter, we started looking at options, one of the options that we ran into surprisingly is something called renewable diesel fuel. This has been around for some time, and it's essentially what what it says, it's it's diesel fuel made out of waste products. This includes waste oil, vegetable oil, beef fat, things of that nature. And it's it's opposed to, it's not a biofuel, it's made much different, you go to the next slide. It's a whole different process for manufacturing the fuel. So when you see biofields, it's it's not really that, it's actually what it's called renewable diesel fuel. It's taken waste or bioproducts and it's making it into a fuel again. Go to the next slide. And so the best example of this, if you go uptown Marion right now, and we know this, we put them there. So we have these grease recycling containers up there right now. These grease recycling containers are collected by Midwest renewable fuels. They take the grease and they take it to Newton, and then Newton, one, one manufacturer, REG, refines it into renewable diesel fuel. Most of what leaves that plant, they make about thirty million gallons a year, most of what leaves that plant goes to California. They're required to do it out there, so you can go to the next slide. So the reason why we've never looked at this is that during cold weather, winter time, it freezes up, it gels up, you can't use it. Okay, so that's one reason why we've never looked at it, just wasn't applicable to our needs. When you see the tags on the filling stations, you'll see these every once in a while, you'll see biodiesel blend or B twenty, that's the amount of of biofuel that's blended with regular fuel, okay? So anytime we get over B twenty, we cannot run them during the winter, just impossible, it'll gel up. And so that's really why we've never gotten, taken a hard look at this, so go to the next slide. So we found out, there's been some cities in in Iowa, Ames is one, that has been running this due to some new tech technology advancement. So Ames is one, they pretty much took most of their large, heavy snowplow fleets and they're running this now. City Madison, they're running this now, Washington DC Public Works, almost all their fleets are on this right now. And this is something we're just learning about, go to the next slide. So when we started pricing this out, the renewable diesel, if we were to put a project together, is significantly less than, let's say, a compressed natural gas option. And so when you look at the price differences, it's it's just, you know, it's astonishing. So the nice thing about this option is that it allows us also to use regular diesel fuel. So we have to fall back, right? So you go to the next slide. The other things is it's scalable, so it really, it would be up to City Marion Council, whether or not you want us to run completely one hundred percent renewable, right? And so if you want us to go to renewable diesel fuel, we can do that, if not, we can scale it down and go back to conventional diesel. It's maintenance free, those issues we have with those emission systems go away. The reason why is when you go to renewable diesel, there's almost zero emissions. And so Ames is one, they said, you know, we don't have those regeneration problems because it burns very, very clean. It's a different process of manufacturing fuel, no petroleum, and so that does not track with oil prices at all. What drives the price of renewable diesel is what they call ring credits, renewable energy credits, okay? Everybody's got to have these, every refinery has got to have these. And so that's what really drives us, and the new requirements, California's one, that's all they burn out there, because it's clean burning. So vendor agreements can get that cost down sustainable, and right now, we're looking at an eight to ten month window to get a chassis delivered to us if we go this route. So that's kind of where we're at, we want to brief the council, answer any questions, get some feedback, some direction on some options that we presented.
Yes, sir. So if we were to think long term, what is the, I guess, lifespan for consideration, how long will compressed natural gas be available relative to the time horizon for renewable diesel fuel? Which one's going to have the greatest longevity in in the industry?
I will say there's been, there's an enormous push going this way. I did not understand the technology I do now, it's very simple. Long term, you're going to see a push for this because the government's required it, this is the direction I see things going. If that answers your question.
Yeah, it does.
Yep.
So explain a little further on what the government is doing to promote them, because so, that mean, when I think about this being relatively new, obviously, you know, the question is still, what happens five, ten years from now? Compressed natural gas had some, six years ago, we were all in that direction, now we're making that shift, I understand the cost factor. But so what happens if something, is there, is there another place besides Newton that makes this, or are there going to be more coming onboard? How do they, how do you get it over here, is it trucked over here? And then you store it in a tanks?
Yep, so I'll back up, yeah, Newton's just one, there's quite a few refineries around here that do this. Renewable diesel, it doesn't have to be made out of oil and waste products, there's other renewable diesels coming online. Right now, the federal government has targeted growth in this industry to double within two years. And so I want to say, in the United States, there's like point six billion gallons of renewable diesel manufactured per year. The federal government wants to see that up to like two to four billion. So there's a big push, and the other thing is, there's a lot of renewable energy credits, biomass tax credits involved. And so I'll give you, give you an idea, that group, Renewable Energy Group, they're headquartered in Ames, they're the largest supplier out in California. They just got bought out by Chevron for like three point one five billion. So refineries don't have an option, they're being forced to do this as an answer. And so long term, yes, it does. There is a costly, typically renewable diesel does cost more, but if you get hooked up with a supplier, you'll 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 have an agreement for wholesale cost. Give an example, when Ames did this, and this is very typical renewable energy group, they just deliver it all over the state, and they deliver it right to Ames, and they supplied them with a filling station. And then they're five percent or five cents under wholesale rack price the whole time.
So I could see the cost savings from the equipment acquisition, and that's huge compared to what we're looking at a couple of years ago. How does the, as far as working on the equipment and looking at the maintenance, you know, five years down the road, CNG versus renewable diesel? I mean, is, are you going to see the same cost savings from an operation standpoint?
This will require less maintenance.
Less maintenance than CNG?
Yes. Yep.
Okay. Are these, so are these just straight diesel engines?
That's it, that is, this technology is supported by what we call OEM warranty technology. And so the people we work with, it's a very simple system, they'll actually go to the factory and install it if you want them to, or they'll train you and install it, and all it is, this is how it works, it's it's a, it's a fuel tank that you have, it's full of renewable diesel. On the other end, they've got a smaller tank, which is regular diesel. And the only reason why they utilize that small tank of really diesel is to prime the engine to start. Once the engine warms up, you start using the renewable diesel, that's a, it's actually pretty clever. So hope that answered your question, but yeah, everything comes from the factory that way. We we prefer it because we want everything warranted. Now, it does not stop you, the nice thing about this too, couldn't stop you from you using this and offer equipment. We don't have that option with CNG, so our backhoes, our loaders, things like that, that can be adapted to this.
A comment and a question, just quickly doing a Google search here, I see that the renewable diesel can be made from vegetable oil or other biomass feedstock, so wood, agricultural rate, waste, garbage, et cetera. And I think that in part answers a concern I had in terms of fuel availability, and you know, is this a sourcing of fuel that will have constraint at various times that then affects our our operations negatively negatively? And I think, just given the the way that it's made, based on its feedstocks, no, we shouldn't have a shortage of fuel availability.
Yeah, weren't they going to throw in their plastic as well, as part of this? And I'll be honest with you, we've been running that on small equipment for a couple of years.
Yeah. So I guess my question is, is there a substantial difference between compressed natural gas and this renewable diesel in terms of mileage?
You'll get better fuel economy with renewable diesel. And the reason, reason why is it has compressed natural gas has less energy content, right? And so when you do a comparative, how many miles, how far can you go on a tank? There's not a lot of energy in compressed natural gas, so we have to equate it, that's why you have to compress it. Because you got to get more in there, diesel, no, you're going to get better mileage, always.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you're using biodiesel on small equipment now?
Yeah.
Where are you getting that from?
It's being sent to us, it's a project we've been working on, and so we're like our little gator, we got, we run that off of.
So your slide up there says the lead time for the chassis is eight to ten months.
Yeah.
So what is the total lead time it would take from the time you would, we would cut a PO till the time that equipment would be here, ready to operate?
So there's a couple of things you got to think about, each piece of equipment's a little bit different.
Right.
So after we get the chassis, ones would be going to become a snowplow, right? So we got to get that box on there, other ones can be a street sweeper. So you got variability in what the upfitters are going to build, so whatever that end product's going to be, you'll have some time. So I'll take a snowplow, we're looking at probably fourteen months, we got to give them four months to put that, that plow.
Fourteen months, so I mean, what I'm thinking about is, I know that this equipment is wearing out, breaking down and and limping along, so I'm trying to think, you know, obviously not going to have it available for this winter, but I'm trying to say, what, think about what timeline we can be in to have it for the next winter of twenty-three, twenty-four.
Planning and preparing to get through this next winter, we are doing a little bit more maintenance ahead of time.
Right, okay.
If we can get through this winter, we'll be okay, and we will.
So so we have enough time, a few more months to get this stuff ordered and be ready for the.
Yeah, we have some very.
Second winner.
Yeah, very talented staff in that mechanical area.
Yeah, they'd have to be, all right, thank you.
Yeah, so spring boarding off of Steve's question there. I'm going to make an assumption, you've got some, you've got some big equipment that desperately needs to be taken out of service. And we have this timeframe of procuring and putting in service new equipment. Is there any logic in our considering a targeted, on a vehicle basis, a targeted program to lease short-term some some equipment in order to eliminate the maintenance headaches that the old stuff is creating for us?
We we have been, okay, so we'll give you an example, like a street sweeper, we rent them when we need them. Our big fleet, like our snowplows, we're okay, we're going to, we're going to do some things this year that are going to get us by. But there's certain things that we do, we do rent.
So what, I guess the only thing I'm thinking about, Ryan, and and I just put this into your decision calculus, make the assumption that your delivery timeframe is is longer than what you're thinking now. The question is, does then on a targeted basis, allocation of leased equipment into your fleet for a period of time make any sense? That's all I'm.
Yep, no, we'll, we'll definitely have an internal discussion about that, once we have clear direction. That way, that'll help our staff saying, hey, here's, here's where we're at, here's what's, here's what's working, here's what's not working. We can definitely take that into consideration.
All right, thanks.
Ryan, thank you, I just wanted to kind of jump in here a little bit, my agriculture side of me tells me that I think this sounds like a great alternative to the compressed natural gas. One of the big contributors to this is just for people's perspective of us, like when your restaurants have their oil waste containers from their vegetable fryers, that source of oil actually goes back in, that's what this biodiesel is made of. Your grocery stores, your butcher shops, your small town locker plants, those animal byproducts, that's what this goes back into. I won't mention about the cosmetics that's made out of it, but so I I'm really leaning towards considering this option, I, you know, we were all excited about the compressor, compressed natural gas, I've been hearing it for years and was excited about it, but I never even thought as, as some of the information that you've been talking about. I see it on the agriculture side, but you'd never worry about those low temperatures with tractors because they're typically not operated. But I really like what I'm hearing on this, as far as the sustainability, until we stop buying french fries and, you know, wings at our favorite restaurants, there's always going to be a product for this, and it's kind of interesting because this product is the number one driver in in states like California and Washington where they're using it, they have to import our product to to fuel their their trucks, so I. Uh, they're using it. They have to import our product, um, to, to fuel their, their trucks. So I. Uh, you know, any diesel vehicle that would be a fleet vehicle even in parks or tractors. Um, in across the fleet of our city, I think this would be a great. You know, item to take a look at. And if we ran into a situation where that product is delayed or we had a temporary shortage, they are, they can still run on, on still the, the. Normal diesel, um, to get us by. So correct me if I'm wrong on that, Ryan, but I, I really like what I'm hearing on this. Uh, and it's fitting within our timeline. It's just unfortunate. We, we. I don't know how some of these trucks are running down the road here. Thank goodness, but.
Get a few things pop up.
Kudos to our mechanics and our drivers that are tolerating and making these, uh, these things work temporarily. So. I know we've been talking about converting our fleet over for years. So I'm glad to see that we're looking at some alternatives here. Thanks.
Yeah. So then it also brings up the discussion item we had a little bit in the past about our garbage trucks. And the manner of collection and how we may look at that possible change over then. Is that? Timeline being factored into this one as well?
So if you saw the in focus that went out last week, uh, we had a little, uh, tidbit in there. Uh, our RFQ has been set for the Salloway study.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
And so we are going to move vigorously on that. And so I've always already had conversations with these consultants. There's a handful of consultants, I, I reached out to them. We already had conversations. They know what they're getting into. They already have quite a bit of data. And so I said, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna move quick.
And as part of that study then, what do we know yet? What they're going to do to get citizen feedback? On this, because that's going to relate to what they prefer. Obviously, there's going to be some cost impact. So all of them assuming hopefully there'll be some aspect of that incorporated into that study.
That's most of it. And so part of this process. We're going to have staff feedback, city council feedback, public service board feedback. We're going to do citizen survey, open houses. This is something that the right firm does this a lot. And then when I visited with them, they were just rattling everything off. What's going to happen? Yes, they know what they're doing. So.
What is this due to your plan for the fueling station then? Would you still?
Um, it, well, what would happen? Can you back up on the slide? This is what happens, um, in our facility, in our building. We no longer need the methane detection if we do this. The other thing that happens are fueling facilities. We don't need to budget for that. Because if we go this direction, they'll provide the fuel, they'll provide the tank. Um, at least that's what they did. And so we're going to save quite a bit on that capital in there. Uh, it simplifies the project. Because we had to wait for the building, we had to wait for the fueling station in order to get the equipment. Here now, we don't. We're, we're a lot more, a lot more flexibility.
Um, I appreciate the pivoting and the looking for solutions, you know, as, as roadblocks come up. Just out of curiosity, how long did you say Ames has run this type?
They've, they've introduced it right around twenty twenty. Uh, city of Madison has been using it since two thousand eighteen. Uh, Washington DC Public Works, I want to say two thousand fourteen or fifteen.
Are you looking for any sort of direction? So do you have what you need?
I think so. Okay. Yep. And if there's any information, white papers or anything, let me know. You have to send them.
Perhaps we should ask our city manager who's the professional garbage thrower on some of the details. No more information?
With, with respect to this discussion?
I was just joking about your first day jumping on the garbage truck.
No, it's, uh, I'm glad we were doing the study. Uh, that's for sure.
Alright, thanks Ryan. And next discussion and direction regarding UTV ordinance.
Alright. This is not nearly as exciting as a flux capacitor that will allow a snowplow to run off french fries. But it does excite some people in the community. You can tell we've got some folks in the back, so this is important and exciting to them. And so I'm, I'm happy to be able to bring this back in front of you. As you guys know, we, we talked about the UTVs, uh, in the past. Uh, the state legislation, there was a bill going through that it looked like it was going to die out. Uh, we started kind of drafting our ordinance and then all of a sudden that one sprung back to life and now it's been pushed through. I think the governor's still waiting to sign it. I don't know if she's.
Yes, it, it was just sent over to the governor for signature earlier this month on the third, along with a whole big pile of other bills. So I expect she'll go on a signing spree any day.
So what we wanted to do was kind of give you, I gave you a copy of what was in the state, uh, bill. I gave you a copy of the draft of kind of what Karen and I have come up with, uh, where we incorporated some of that language. And, and I think we're just looking for some direction. We're going to talk about a couple of things. There's some, uh, equipment issues that I bear talking about. Um, but then kind of get an idea. If you guys are, if there's anything else you want in there, any more questions you want answered? And if, if not, if you want to go forward, we can push something through at the next council meeting and, and let you take a look at a formal copy and. And make a decision at that time. But, uh, so the state ordinance, again, they, it allows, uh, UTVs. And ATVs to operate on primary and secondary roads. It gives the cities an out. It does not allow them on city streets. It, it lets you guys make that decision, which is refreshing to, to let the cities make a decision. For, for what they allow here. Uh, the operators have to be eighteen years old and have a valid DL. Uh, speed limit is, is set at thirty-five miles an hour. They have to have proof of liability insurance. Uh, they have to be equipped like any other motor vehicle, two headlamps, turn signals, brake lights. Um, the lights have to be on when the vehicle's in motion, things like that. Um, again, they did allow cities to limit what roads, uh, can be operated on. And we'll talk about that language just here in a second. Um, they talk about, uh, divided highways that they can't drive on divided highways, but they can cross at a ninety degree angle. So. Again, we waited until that was through so we could kind of pull some of that language into ours. We didn't want to be accused of, you know, unilateral promulgation. Uh, we wanted to bring that into focus. So, um. I will tell you, since we started this conversation, we've gotten, and I know you guys have gotten it as well, pros and cons from the community. Uh, some people want it, some people don't. Uh, so. The, the draft ordinance that we've put together thus far, we were trying to address concerns, uh, both ways. I know, uh, some of the. Uh, people who were against it thought that they were too noisy, uh, too slow, that it was a safety issue because they weren't big enough. Uh, and some just thought they were not a right fit for a city our size. Uh, I previously told you council bluffs in Urbandale allow them. They're both bigger than we are now. Um. But what we did, that one of the differences in ours that we proposed is. Uh, it would be for UTVs only and not ATVs. I don't like the, uh, I think I had a slide, but that was at the first slide, Terrell. Yeah, I made that. Did you know you can buy those little circle things and put on there? I, I was shocked at what I could do when I started playing with that. Uh, so this will not affect golf carts. It won't be, uh, for ATVs. The four wheelers with the saddle seats, uh, and it will not affect snowmobiles. This is particularly, um. Directed at the operation of UTVs here in the city. Ours includes everything pretty much that the state has as far as the operator, the driver's license requirement, the age restriction of eighteen, the insurance requirement. Uh, the standard equipment, the lights, turn signals, mirrors, speedometer, et cetera. Uh, there was a couple of things that I do want to get your thoughts on that we added. Uh, and I do have somebody here from recreational motorsports, Scott, um, Menzamire helped draft. The state legislation and the bill that went through. So if you've got specific questions that I can't answer. Uh, I'm going to defer to him and ask him to come up and, and talk about it. Uh, one of the things the state, I'll back up. In the state regulations or the state bill, it says, quote, all Iowa cities may regulate the operation of traffic. ATV, UTV traffic within their city limits. Mr. Menzamire told me that that was designed so that you could restrict streets and not necessarily equipment. So keep that in mind when we talk about these, these next two items, because these are the only two equipment issues I think that we did differently than the state. The DOT rated tires. We've talked about these things. I, I thought I knew more about them than I ever wanted to know. And then I found out more here the past week. My concerns were the, uh, uh, the noise and the traction issues. I, uh, Mr. Menzamire has, has told me that. The traction issue doesn't come into play until you're above like thirty-five miles per hour. So if our speed limit's restricted to thirty-five, I don't think the traction is going to be an issue. And it's kind of the same thing with the noise. Uh, he was kind enough to go out with a noise meter, uh, and test some for us this past week. That's on, uh, the next two slides, Terrell. So here's what he came up with, with the noise test that he did at, and it was fifty feet from the street in a residential area. Our noise ordinance is two hundred feet. I think that those levels are going to be well within where we need them to be as far as noise. Uh, the tires, again. If you look at the aggressive tires, uh, those are going to be the ones that have the, uh, the really deep treads. The stock tires are going to be more the standard ones that come with the units when they're sold. Uh, you can see that difference in there. You know, for clarity, the, uh, I put our residential district in our times in there, which is one of the reasons why I wanted to. Restrict our time limits from ten PM to seven AM, uh, to kind of mirror that, uh, noise ordinance, just to make sure that we're not, um. Having people out running around all, all hours of night in them, if they are, you know, noisier than what they should be. Most of the noise is going to be due to the engines on these things and not the tires. And the reason they're more noisy than say a car is because, you know, car engines are insulated. And these things, the only thing between your ears and the motor is that little thin piece of plastic. So that's where most of the noise is going to come from. We've got, uh, restrictions in ours as far as having a muffler system we put in there. Um. If you look at, at the comparisons to motorcycles, they're not as loud as a motorcycle. Uh, to give you, you know, kind of context, you know, the, a lawnmower is eighty to ninety decibels. Uh, and we restrict those to operation, uh, between seven AM and ten PM as well. So I, I'm not concerned about the noise. And, and the traction issue, uh, so the tires to me is kind of a non-issue, but the ultimate. That's up to you guys. If you have other concerns about that, I'm certainly willing to listen to that and, and put it in whatever you want to see. The draft that we proposed, again, limits the speed to thirty-five miles per hour or less. It does not allow operation. We cut it off pretty much anything, um, east of Hy-Vee. Uh, because the road divides down there. I don't want anybody going past that to the east and then to the south on, uh, Eleventh Street. Uh, it would cut off at Grand. I don't want them going all the way down on, um, East Post where it turns into East Post and then hits Highway one hundred. I, I would prefer they not be down there. And again, I say I prefer, but I, I'm merely the police chief. So. I would highly recommend that you guys consider that as part of, uh, any restrictions that you put on. The, uh, again, we got some correspondence, uh, earlier this week about people concerned about the time limits. Uh, being set at ten PM that if they'd gone to another town or were out at dinner someplace else. Uh, and coming back that they wouldn't be able to get back in town in time. And I think that's just a consideration you have to take. If, if you want to take that, uh. Uh, take that into account. Again, the state didn't put any limits on theirs. It's twenty-four, seven. But again, you have, I think you have that liberty of, of setting those times as you see fit. We did put in there, we don't want them operating on bike trails or parks, uh, except in the parking lots. Uh, we don't want them on any of the public waterways, ponds, frozen ponds. We don't want them down on Waldo's pond down there, touring around on, on the ice. And we don't want them in any, any season, uh, city easements. I think that's pretty much it. From what I've got, I can answer questions. I've got, um. Scott Menzamire back here that can answer questions. If you've got more questions about tires or placards, that was the other piece. I did put in that we should put slow moving placards on them. Again, that was in response to, um. Trying to appease some of the people that were against these as far as the, they're not visible and they were afraid a car would hit them or rear end them. Um, again, if you've got brake lights and taillights that are working at all times. That may negate the need for that. Um, some cities require placards, some require flags. Uh, the state bill didn't have either one of those in there. So again, that's just kind of a decision point we'd have to come to or you would have to come to. So is there any questions? Go ahead, Randy.
Chief, I have just a few and it's obviously just, uh, stuff that's in my wheelhouse. Um, there's nothing in here that talks about, you know, everybody should be seated and buckled in, providing that there are restraints. Original to the equipment. Um, I'm a little concerned about. What's, what's been taken off, what hasn't been properly equipped, um, kind of leaving that a little bit gray. Um, a couple of things that I'm concerned with is, um. Passengers riding in the rear. Um, I don't see anything in here in reference to, um, our regulations by state, by vehicle with youthful. Children under the weights. Um, there's not, there's no discussion here about car seats. Um, or weight restrictions for, for children. Um, those are just a couple of quick concerns that I had a little bit about. You know, somebody chooses to have their three-year-old and they're side by side with them. Uh, are they required to have a? Uh, a youthful seat or a child's seat? There's a couple of things there that I kind of had pointed out. I'm kind of on the fence post whether or not these placards are required. I, I understand their design. But we're asking for people now to drill holes in the back of their, their boxes or on the backs of the cabs. Um. Just trying to weigh that one out personally. I. I'm not a, I'm, I'm. I don't know if I'm in quite a hundred percent in agreeance with requiring those, but those are just a couple of items that I had.
I did, I would point out that in ours, we've got the number of passengers in the UTV shall not exceed the number of factory installed seats, which I think would address kids riding in the bed.
Yeah, and that's exactly what I was trying to get at. Yeah, because I. We were boys at one time. You know, and, and no matter of two blocks is two blocks. Um, uh, yeah. So, and I appreciate that. Thank you for pointing that out. Yep. So we, we know that those weren't, um, approved. Seating areas obviously for individuals, but, um, again, just a couple of things from my perspective, obviously. Proof of insurance or financial responsibility, you know, we, we ensure those. One of the things that a lot of carriers will. This is something for our city not to be worried about, but from a carrier's perspective, a four wheeler or a UTV of any type that is insured. One of the key questions asked from a property casualty insurance company is whether or not it is registered to be on the roads, public roads. There's a huge difference with that little checkbox when it goes to an underwriting standpoint. Naturally, the premiums are more expensive because your liability is higher. So, um. I'm not sure how that's going to be addressed, but you know, because legally, um, they could show proof of insurance, but if it's not legally. Done properly, I guess that's not our worry. I guess that's, I'm just thinking out loud here, but UTVs are insured two different ways. One's for public use, one's not for public use. So, um. I'm just trying to make sure that we've got that extension out there for, for liability for people. So. I see carriers denying claims if it was involved in an automobile accident, because it was never disclosed to their insurance carrier. So. It's just something to think about, but I don't know how we can interfere with that. But anyway, thank you. Just a few thoughts.
Yeah. So when we first discussed this issue back in the wintertime, uh, initially I was on the fence. Uh, that was my public comment. The second time we discussed it, I had done some homework and learned about what a UTV was and was not. And I think people who have concerns about them being on the streets probably haven't done their homework. They're still thinking golf carts. They're still thinking ATVs. And so if you get educated about UTVs and you really find out what they're all about. I mean, there's some very nice vehicles out there. And the other aspect I look at, I see what is already on the streets. You've got Jeeps with no doors running around town. You've got these slings with three wheels running around. Uh, so you, you look at. These UTVs with the roll bars, with everything else, they're safe, they're safer than a lot of other. Vehicles that are already on the street running around. So from the standpoint, as I learned more about it. Uh, I'm completely comfortable with it, uh, for, for UTVs to be on our streets. As far as following up with Randy's comment about the placard, I don't think they're slow moving vehicles. They're slow moving at all. Uh, you know, they're, you look at some of these out that are running around out there. Uh, when I went and talked to the motorsports company, Hemingraff, you know, these things can go up to eighty mile an hour, you know, some of the bit higher end ones. So. Most of them are not going to be slow moving. They just don't have a license plate on them, so they're going to look a little bit different. Uh, the other thing, the two things we talked about in the past, when you know, I had a discussion about the tires. And we started out initially saying they were going to have just road use tires. So now you've made. Kind of a change in that aspect. kind of a change in that aspect of saying, original tires are now going to be okay. So what went into your thought process and that change?
I think the, the more I talk to people that have them and, and then when I found out that the, the ratings on those tires was the higher rate of speed. So again, if we're limiting ours to thirty-five miles an hour, it's not going to make a, a, a difference of whether it's a stock tire or the DOT tire. And that was my two concerns was, and, and the noise was, you know, the traction and the noise. And I think I've just learned that that's not, not a concern.
And the other aspect, aspect we, we've talked about in the past is clarifying, and I want to make sure I understand what is in this. I read through it a couple of times, I want to make sure I'm understanding it, is we can restrict these to specific routes or roads within the city. You're kind of talking about not doing that, but basically saying you can't go, you're just putting extreme limits on where they can't go because of the four-lane highways. So you're saying there are no restrictions on all of the roads, except for those four-lane roads that you described. Everything else inside the city limits would be appropriate, is that correct?
I believe that we've got in here streets where the speed limit is thirty-five miles an hour or less. And that's pretty much, there's not many that aren't.
Yeah, and I'm, yeah, I'm in agreement with that. And I know there's some discussion early on about you could just limit routes where they come into town and you can say you go, you can only come this way or that way. So yeah, I would agree, I think that is also appropriate.
And I think in the noise areas that, you know, our residential areas, most of those are twenty-five, the purely, purely residential areas. The speed limits are twenty-five, which again is going to decrease that decimal level down on the noise. So I'm, I, again, that kind of sold me that we were, we were okay.
Yeah, and all the parties on both sides should understand that if we do adopt this, we can fine-tune it next year. And so if we find out the ten PM thing doesn't work, maybe it should be a different time or some other aspect needs to be refined, then we can do so next year. But as far as starting out, I think everything you've outlined is certainly good with me.
Just a question, or maybe I want to make sure I completely understand. So I think you just said, right, as it says in here, that can be operated upon any city roadway with a speed limit of thirty-five miles per hour or less. So that doesn't mean that you can be on a roadway that's forty mile an hour speed limit and only go thirty-five. What you're saying here is that any, the roads that they can be on have to be thirty-five miles or less speed limit. Okay. Second is really just a comment. I think this is an excellent example of how the process works. Couple of city residents came forward, they wanted to talk about this. There's been a lot of folks investigating a particular, you know, how we might make this work in the city. So I, I just think that sometimes folks don't understand that there's a process and that the process actually is a good process. So I, I, we haven't approved anything yet, but I think I just really appreciate our residents bringing it forward and our staff has put a lot of time and effort into getting us to this point.
Thank you. Can you go back to the slide with the noise, with the decimals? Can you, Chief, can you just reiterate again? What is the level now that we consider to be, I mean, you know, I think we all hear it, like the revving motorcycles that even, that are loud. I mean, that you hear roaring down a road or, and I know it's so that people can hear them and know that they're there, you know, for accidents, but we can hear them and they are loud. Can you go to the one more where we, they tested, that's this one? So what is our, these are the test results, but again, what is our community's level or what do we consider to be?
So ours is that bottom box, the, and that's measured at two hundred feet. So residential districts is, is from seven AM to ten PM, it's sixty decibels. Ten PM to seven AM, it's fifty. Commercial district at all times, it's sixty-five, and then industrial, it's seventy-five.
So within residential districts, you could have motorcycles that are too loud.
Correct.
As well as these, and, and, yeah. Yeah, and so, but there's really nothing that can, I, I'm forecast, like, I, I totally understand and I'm kind of with Steve. Like, I went from what are we talking about this issue for to, okay, I understand, okay, you're right. These are probably more equipped than some of the other vehicles on the road. And they're sometimes, I think, bigger than some of the vehicles that may be on the road these days. But I just want to understand this because I forecast into the people that we open this up and there's not as a responsible driver or owner who takes this around and it's loud. And then the residents are calling and we're trying to balance between why did we do this or what this has done and how we answer that question or address that for, for the one who maybe isn't as respectful to those around. So right now we have motorcycles, like, we allow motorcycles and they could be violating this because of the noise we allow, right?
Correct.
Okay. Good to know, then my second question, or maybe it's more of a comment, but is there a way that with the, to address the concerns of we may have this out, we may not may be back in time? How does that impact the drivers or the owners? And maybe this is my age or maybe this is just my pattern, but can it, can there be like weekend hours and, and weekly hours? I'm thinking if you, you know, most people aren't out for dinner at a ten o'clock on a weeknight. But maybe on a weekend you will because it's a different traffic pattern. Is that a possibility if we do go to an hours limit to change those or holidays or something?
I think we could, but I was trying to stay consistent with the noise ordinance. And those hours that were established in other ordinance, because I didn't want to have to go in and, because I think if we change this, if we do this and we change that, then we would probably have to go into the noise ordinance and I would defer to the lawyer on that, but.
Yes, that's, that's correct. Even as it is now, there would potentially be some problems with the noise ordinance depending on the type of, of tires, assuming that there was some sort of residential area where it was thirty-five miles an hour or higher, because I don't remember exactly what you said about it, if it's at twenty-five miles an hour. Most of them still would not meet the standard for the noise ordinance because at ten o'clock that drops to fifty decibels. So actually, none of those, if they dropped seven decibels down, none of them would be within the noise ordinance after ten o'clock. From ten PM until seven AM, it's fifty decibels or below in, in a residential district.
Have any of the other communities that have adapted this addressed this section of, I'm guessing they have similar type of noise ordinances in their communities? If they, do they just have a different number?
And every, yes, and everybody's different. Council Bluffs uses a fifty-foot distance, and I want to say theirs was eighty, I think, I remember that. And I can, if Scott Minzenmeyer, if, if you would allow, were you guys okay with he comes up? He says he can answer some of the questions you have. Again, he's worked through all this, going through the state bill, and so I'm sure he's got more answers than I do.
Yep, if you could just make sure to speak into the microphone, if you could say your name and address, please.
I'm sorry.
Could you, sorry, could you state your name and address?
Oh, yes, my name's Scott Minzenmeyer, I live in Anamosa, I own recreational motorsports power dealer. I can speak directly about this, I have been ransacked by all sorts of representatives and senators for the past eight, nine months, so I can answer a lot of questions for you. I, I would start, I know you had a lot of them and, and part of it was with the tires. One thing that we have to look at on the tires, all tires on most side-by-sides are designed up to eighty mile an hour. Most of these vehicles, especially the sport vehicles like you were talking about, they're designed to go high speeds through rough terrain. When you take that same vehicle and you put it on a smooth surface, even if you're down to fifty mile an hour, you still have way more control than you probably would at high speeds on rough terrain. As far as the DOT goes, there's a DOT approved and there's a TOT rated, like the chief was talking about, police chief. The DOT-approved tire, what that amounts to is like a street tire. A DOT-rated tire is the carcass, in other words, the sidewalls. A, a rated tire for side-by-sides are available, they do not come that way. Currently, the sidewalls on all UTV tires, and usually it's called a, there, well, there's several different brands out there, but they have to be able to take a corner at at least fifty mile an hour. So anything that you have here as far as the street would go, you would have no, no issues whatsoever. And please understand, we had to work with the, with the DOT and the Senate and the House as far as being able to ride this on a state highway. So your safety issues as far as the seat belts go, or the, obviously, the slow-moving vehicle sign, they scrutinize this pretty heavy. Most all, and I can, I think actually all side-by-sides that are for passenger, even the ones that have jump seats that are for passenger, which would be like a Honda Pioneer or some of the other utility models, they all come with rear seat belts. Available today from several different manufacturers, there's actually child seats for side-by-sides. So if that was a concern, those could be used. The other thing was the decibels, I'm actually the one, Mike asked me to do, this was at fifty feet. Obviously, this was in town in a housed area, so we weren't out in the open. What I wanted to do is get the loudest acoustics I could, just so we'd have a legitimate. It's not as much tires that you hear, now you'll, you know, you'll hear your normal four-wheel-drive truck come through town howling because it's got mud grips on it or something. But it, it has to do with weight. The, the average side-by-side four-seater is going to be in the eighteen-hundred to nineteen-hundred pounds. An average two-seater is going to be anywhere from fifteen to eighteen-hundred pounds, depending on the model. You know, that's, that's more than a smart car. So weight-wise, it's, it's not a big issue, but what really regulates the sound on a side-by-side is speed. When we took that test and we actually dropped down a little later after I'd called you about it, and we dropped down to twenty mile an hour and it was actually ten decibels less. So it's, it's the speed that basically creates the sound. As far as control issues, there's nothing. The one thing I would add, by state law, and, and I was, had the fortunate opportunity to, to write with the state bill writers, so we worked back and forth. State law says it has to have a headlight that runs all day long during daylight hours. You need to have a brake and taillight, mirror and horn. Turn signals were not in that. That is not part of the regulation. The only reason that was is because this is an ATV-UTV law. And, and ATVs don't use turn signals. And, and if you're going to limit them, that's perfectly fine within the limits. The way the bill reads, it actually reads that all cities can regulate the operation of ATV-UTV traffic. And when we sat down and wrote the bill and made our compromises, that was more what we were concerned about, it's the traffic in the cities, Des Moines, Waterloo, Iowa City, that was the big concern. We figured after we passed the scrutiny of DOT, as far as running on a state highway, all of the regulations as far as equipment would go would be adequate anywhere. So as far as adding a turn signal or a slow-moving vehicle sign, you, you have to remember, you, you don't have a slow-moving vehicle sign on a bicycle. And they can't even meet the speed limit. And, and what I'm worried about, the, the biggest thing about when we, when we pulled this bill together was to increase tourism. And you take, if you would put a placard or something on, the problem that you probably have is you might get your local people to come into town. But what people don't realize is the people in town might drive out, Stone City, somewhere in, in Johnson County, wherever. But you're also going to have traffic to your restaurants in town from out of county. You'll have Jones County people, you know, you'll have Johnson County people might want to ride to a small restaurant. If they come into town and their equipment requirements are different, the uniformity between all counties, what this was all about, if we start to change the regulations as far as equipment, what we're going to find is you're going to get people that are picked up unknowingly because they didn't know the city law was something different than the state requirement. And I think you'll get a lot of backlash from that. As far as the city goes, I can attest for several small towns, you, to the answer to your question, as far as the timeframe, ten o'clock is, is a pretty normal time on some of even the small towns. There's one or two towns in Iowa now, small towns that I know of that maybe let it go all night long. And part of it is they're rural towns where we have farming going on, where farmers are using these things to, you know, to come into town. Every single one of them has to be registered by the DNR to be able to ride on the highway. So I, I, I don't really see that as an issue. And, and maybe more of a comforting note, in twenty nineteen and late, early twenty twenty, we put out a survey before we even started the bill, we got forty-six hundred respondents through all ninety-nine counties in Iowa. And the, when you look at it, one of the things is, is the age we looked at. Fifty-one percent of those forty-six hundred people were aged thirty to forty-nine and twenty-eight percent were over fifty. So our demographics are more around adults or supposedly, you know, you can't fix stupid. There's, there's going to think be problems somewhere eventually with somebody. And also forty-seven percent of the people that have a side-by-side live in town. So there's a large amount of side-by-sides in town. Other than that, I, I guess, I don't know of anything else that I can, I guess, help you with unless you had other questions, something that hasn't already been discussed.
Circling back, you were talking about the time. My big pieces on hearing discussions and feedback has been noise. But maybe that's because like I personally have a lot, really good hearing, so if I hear, you know, everything. I'm kind of sensitive to it, but, and time, because I know that's been a concern from some of our residents who have, who own these. So did I hear you say that ten o'clock is a pretty, the ten o'clock restriction is pretty similar?
Basically, the reason it was, was because that was part of a normal ordinance already. I, I haven't seen many cities deviate from their normal traffic ordinance time to, to make a special exception for side-by-sides. I'd like to say, you know, all night long, but we're realists here, you know, we understand that. The only other thing that I would project, and, and I've talked to a lot of side-by-side riders, you know, there's, the, the law says that a city cannot charge a fee. And there's some, some cities in Iowa that are charging a fee, which preemption comes to play there. And I think you can agree with that, it's state law, you know, overrules everything. There's a lot of cities that are charging exponential tickets and, and we really don't have a problem with that. So in other words, if a side-by-side rider is, is riding through town crazy with loud noise and everything else, if that fee was high enough, there's some cities that it's three hundred dollars for a noise ordinance for a side-by-side. We don't see anything wrong with that, I speak in general, hopefully some of these people in the back won't come. There's side-by-side riders back there, yeah. Would, would you be opposed if there was a high fee? You see, so if I got a three hundred dollar ticket, I probably wouldn't do it again. That, that's my consensus of it, so.
Go ahead, one of you.
So Scott, thanks for all your effort at, at the state level and being here today. So two things you talked about, one is the placards, and I think we already had a couple of comments regarding the placards. The other one you talked about that was a deviation, if I'm understanding it correctly, are turn signals. Where neither one of those two items are required
That's correct.
in the state bill.
That's correct.
And that's a concern of yours.
That it's not a concern that it's not in the state bill, it's a concern if you
Add it.
Add it, correct.
Right, so let's talk about the turn signals, the placards, I'm fine doing away with those. I'm, everybody else needs to give their comment. But on the turn signals, I mean, my understanding, when I talk to Em'Graff Motorsports, is sixty percent of everything they put out new has turn signals on it.
Twenty-twenty-three, they've started, okay? That's when it started, twenty, late twenty-two on some really deluxe models. But ninety percent of all side-by-sides come without turn signals.
Come without, yeah. Yeah, they, so sixty percent of them that go out of their place have them on there, so yes, they're retrofitting them.
Exactly.
Yes, I understand that, but, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at that number and they're saying sixty percent of their new stuff leaves there with turn signals. So I mean, you already have a pretty high percentage, so. I don't know, I'll, I'll look for the chief on how big of a deal turn signals are, I mean, you've got it in there now as a requirement, right?
I think, thank you. I, I think when you're looking at
I think, thank you. I, I think when you're looking at riding them in town as opposed to riding them out in the county, you're going to have a lot more traffic. And I just think turn signals is a smart requirement, and I know it may turn some people away that don't have them. But I guess at the end of the day, if they want to come into town and ride them, then they should equip them. And I know you can buy aftermarket.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And that's what they're putting on. My only rebuttal to that would be is if the DOT in the state of Iowa doesn't require it on a state highway uh where you could turn onto Highway one, go down Highway one and turn off of Highway one, you know, the most direct route to get off. Uh, if they don't require it, and that would be almost as big a safety issue on a state highway.
At a higher speed.
At a higher speed. That, that's my only rebuttal to that.
Yeah, and we don't, we don't take it idiots that don't use their turn signals. Is that correct? Now you know how I feel about turn signals, so I'd be very vocal about it. Alright, thanks, Scott.
Alright.
Thank you. Go ahead, Grant.
Yeah.
Does you have a question for him?
Well, yeah, Scott, just a, a, a comment. So based on the work that you've done with the legislators, the DOT, getting the legislation uh through the House and the Senate. Um, it seems to me you've done a substantial amount of homework. And uh I appreciate your comment about the, the requirements being level set uniformly across the state. Um, and how we respond to that. So I did, that was just a comment I wanted to make uh to you, and I, I thank you for your, your comments that you've given here this, this evening. I, my, my thoughts on this are um somewhat in, in no priority, but, but uh these are the data points that are floating around in my uh my head. The size of the vehicles and the fact that we're limiting to four wheel, four wheel vehicles, uh, the size of uh these don't uh cause me any concern. Um, they are bigger than motorcycles physically, and they are bigger than, uh, I think you referenced the smart cars. Um, so I don't have any issue on that relative to the noise profile. Um, we all know that there are motorcycles that are very loud, loud pipes save lives. And uh there are trucks that are extremely loud, not only in terms of engine noise and mufflers, but also in terms of the uh the, the tire noise that they create. Relative uh to the noise, an extension of that is um operational time. I appreciate the fact that the draft that we have uh coincides with our noise or ordinance, I think is the upshot. Um, but then again, we don't, we don't limit when motorcycles that have loud pipes operate. So on one hand, I appreciate that we're, we're putting that specification there, but we don't impose it on another uh vehicle category. Generally speaking, uh, the safety uh profile of, of these seems to clearly uh exceed and eclipse the safety profile of a motorcycle. Um, and then finally, I guess, the only other comment about passengers in the back, one of the things that really bothers me, and I, this is from what I observe in pickups, is that we've got people that throw their uh family dog in the back bed of a pickup and they go driving around and the dog's just, you know, wandering around free back there. I'm a dog lover. I think that's bad. So I think we should, if it isn't already in the draft ordinance, we should specify that pets are not in the back as well as uh human passengers unless they're appropriately accommodated relative to belted seating. So um I think the only negative comment that has come my way, so the technical safety attributes, I think the UTVs have satisfied that in, in, in my view. The only negative that I've received from c- community members is kind of that one of, is this really the aesthetic that we want to have for our community? And I appreciate that, and I've thought hard about that, but then I also think about we have trucks and Jeeps with off-road tires with, you know, winches on the front, uh cargo racks on the top, uh, you know, submersion muffler intakes or uh carburetor intakes. Um, I just, I can't, I can't, uh, I'm sensitive to the aesthetics, but we also don't impose that on other vehicle categories. So in general, um, I want to give this some more consideration, but right now I'm generally in favor of uh accommodating these vehicles. And that's kind of where I'm at. And I'm also interested in, you know, inputs to the con- uh contrary. If there's some, and I think we all should, if there's something that we aren't considering in this that is absolutely substantive, but right now it generally comes out on the plus side of the equation for me. Thank you.
My, my last thing I'd like to say is that if the representatives and the senators, if we made it past that, I think we can almost make it past anything I've learned. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'll, I'll give my opinion real quick. You, you're fine, you're fine. Um, I think some of the things that have been brought up, turn signals, I think, should be mandatory. I, if, if state law, if for some reason the state law superseded us putting signals on, I would say we just scrap it all together. Then I think that's, has to be on there. Placards, I don't think you need it. They're going to be going just as fast as all the cars that they're driving around with because they're going to be limited to the thirty-five miles an hour street. Tires, I don't, from what we're seeing here with the decibels, I, I guess I don't, that was my concern was the noise too, I guess, and it doesn't seem like it's that big of a deal, especially since this was done at thirty-five miles an hour at fifty feet where ordinance is two hundred. I mean, it's going to drop even more and be under the ordinance, I would assume. Um, and then most of the time, I'm just probably going to be in that twenty-five miles an hour range anyway. Um, and then child seats, I think that's a good idea to add that in. If, if, just like in a car, if you've got someone that's three years old, they should be restrained just like they're in a vehicle because they're driving just like a vehicle is driving on the street. Otherwise, I think everything else that you had in there, I would agree with. Location and the time. I'm, I was leaning towards not having a restriction on it because if, if the whole reason was because of the noise ordinance, but it's really not, not an issue. But then if all the cities pretty much have that now, um, I guess that doesn't bother me as much now if it's pretty common. And again, I forget who said it, but someone said we can tweak this. I think maybe Steve talked about it. If it becomes an issue, then uh with the tires or with noise, or if we don't have a time limit, um, we can always tweak it in the future, so. Yes, Steve.
Yeah, I think the last comment I'd make, and I understand the two deviations from the Scott talked about, that were how we're deviating mostly from the state uh ordinance that came out or state law. One is the placard, and if we get rid of that, then we're down to the turn signals. And again, I personally, I'm in favor of the turn signals. But I think maybe an appropriate offset to that might be for the first year, we just have a, a, a warning or a sheet that you give to everybody and say in twenty twenty-two, uh, we're just letting you know that turn signals will be required in twenty twenty-three, so everybody has plenty of time to modify their vehicle and put them on uh and, and do it in that manner. So I think it's a, a way to work with that group in a, in a reasonable fashion. Yet, again, if everybody wants turn signals up here, then, then they'll have to uh adjust. So that'd be my recommendation on how to implement that change, and I understand what Scott's talking about, but I'm still a fan of turn signals.
I think also to uh seat belts. I guess I would assume that's an aftermarket thing that could be added. It's not. No. That's a they all come with it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Gotcha. Well, then, yeah, seatbelt for sure required. Um, I just lost my, go ahead, because I lost whatever else I was going to say.
Well, I, this, this is really a residual uh comment in a um uh chief, um, just for your um benefit, this was in fact uh way more interesting to me this evening than Marty McFly and Doc Brown talking about one point two one gigawatts in their flux capacitor. So I'm just telling you, okay? Good job.
Okay. I do have uh one further question, and I don't know if I just missed this as I was trying to sift through some noise ordinances. Um, but one of the directions we needed was when we bring this back to you, we're not required to have a public hearing, but based on some of the reactions we've gotten, our question was whether or not you would like us to schedule one.
I don't see it hurting anything. Fine, man. Fine. Yeah. I, it's another comment. I mean, it just I, seems like some comments that you've, we've heard about them, um, the negative comments is it that it's not like they're just going to be UTVs all over the streets all of a sudden. There's not that many of them. It's not like we're going to be overrun with UTVs. We'll see a couple here and there. But uh, so I, I guess, yeah. Okay, anything else? Okay, let's move on to the next one then. Uh, discussion regarding future artistic gears for the pedestrian bridge over Marion Boulevard. Oh, nope. Yep, we are on that one. Um, and the contract with Kara Briggs Farmer.
So mine is not exciting. I was talking about dust bowls either, but
Looks like a flux capacitor.
Alright, so what we're talking about is the pedestrian bridge right now that is uh mostly done over Marion Boulevard, Seventh Avenue. Um, so the peers that are vacant from that area right now, um, we have talked to Kara Briggs Farmer. Um, she is still finalizing final costs because these are too large for her to manufacture in her studio. So looking at a, a contract with Media Quests to use their studio to build these. Um, they are twenty-six foot tall. I have it misquoted in the memo. They're fourteen foot wide and three foot thick. There are four of them, so there's two on each side. Um, what we're looking at is, let's say we get this project done in the next couple of months, have ribbon cutting. It might take six months to get to the DOT audit and then two years possibly to get FHWA to approve it. So in that meantime, we can't put those up. So rather than waiting two and a half years or however long it takes for all the approvals that we have to go through to get that, and that letter that we get from FHWA just shows up in the mail, like they don't tell us, it just shows up. Um, what we would like to do, talking with Kara, is actually build them. And then whether we put them all up in Lisle Park or whether we put, say, two of them on the trail next to the Legion, um, we can showcase those so that when people ask, well, where's the rest of the bridge? We can say, you know, it's in Lisle or it's on the trail. Um, or if they're in Lisle and they see them and they can uh get excited about it and say, you know, once FHWA signs off on it, we can unbolt them from the foundation that we build, wherever we put them temporarily and install them on the bridge. So her contract, she's still working through it, is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build these four. Um, likely if we wait two years, that obviously is going to go up. I don't think the price is going to go down at all. Um, the footings, we would have to figure out the exact number on that, but using some numbers from what Public Service buys for a yard of concrete, um, they get a cubic yard of concrete for a hundred and forty dollars. Um, I wouldn't think they'd be much bigger than that. Again, these are aluminum, so they're, they're not very heavy. And she even talked about, similar to the tree that we bring up uh during the winter fest, that it's on a movable concrete base that we can just set it wherever we want. So whether or not we light it, that might just vary if, depending on where we put it. So for example, we put it by the Legion, we might not have a power source there versus if we put it on the Lisle Park sculpture trail, then we would have an option to, to tee off those lights. So the discussion of where it's going to go and all that can be a future discussion. More of it is, does city council want to see these built now while the prices are what they are? Or is you rather wait? It's going to take her about six months to build them irregardless. And so we thought it was a good idea being staff to um get some input from city council on whether you want to, to build them now or whether you'd rather wait.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so Mike, I would support getting them built now and showcasing them however we decide um in the interim. Um, until we get the approval from who, who's FHWA?
Federal Highway Administration.
Okay. I thought so, okay. Well, um,
You let us down, Mike.
And I think there's a variety of other places that these might be showcased, and if, if that approval were to lag and if they're movable, um, you know, we might be able to display them in multiple places, you know, the art way comes into, into mind too. So I, I think this plan of attack seems to make sense to me.
Yeah, I, I would also agree to go ahead and build them now. Uh, I'm concerned about showing them, to be quite honest. Uh, what, what is the, the colored part? What is that actually going to be made out of and how thick is it going to be?
So that was a conversation. So Kara was going to be here tonight to talk about some of that stuff, but she had something come up.
Okay.
Um, it's actually a material um that it sounded like you just iron it on. So she, again, she's still figuring out some of that material, but it's, it sounds like it's clear that when she builds it. And then basically, it, it's kind of like a stained glass that's in the old library where it's something that you then put it on, but she's looking at different options on that, so it's not solidified yet. Um, so she was saying that if somebody came in and a local young artist drew something on it, they would be able to peel that off and put something back on it to fix it. Um.
And my, my concern about showing them off around the city, and I love the idea, I love the concept, my concern is that's not their final destination. And I'm concerned about vandalism. I'm concerned about pieces on it getting broken, people shooting something through them, throwing rocks at them and breaking it or something like that. If you put them out in remote areas on the trail by Lisle Park, so personally, I'm in favor of building it now. I'm not sure I'm in favor of showing them off just for that reason. We've already had, I told Ryan, we've already had vandalism up here on the North Plaza and some of the, the stuff there. And that's in a heavily traffic area. So, so I've got a major concern about vandalism and, and those being in places where they're not going to be, uh, people aren't driving by all the time, so.
And that can be something that's discussed. Once they're actually built, what we want to do with them, again, they're made to be outside, so they can likely be stored outside. If we don't want to showcase them, they could likely just, they don't need to take up space in a facility. They could be stored outside if that's all the ultimate decision. Um, but at first, we just got to decide whether we want to build them or not.
And you might be able to come up with some locations that personally I might find more acceptable. Huh?
Middle of a roundabout.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So there may be some, some, yeah, some workable options there. I'd love to show them off. But again, where they're located, I think would have to be really, really scrutinized on, on where you're going to go at. So make sure I'm understanding these dimensions better. I found out at the Marion Arts Festival, talking to Kara, they were bigger than I originally thought. So you're saying these are three foot deep, fourteen foot wide?
Fourteen foot wide and no, fourteen feet wide and twenty-six foot tall.
Those are a lot bigger than I originally remembered.
Because of that circle metal in the middle.
Oh, you're including
I believe that's the dimension of that, the actual column.
Part?
No.
No.
I'd have to double check with her.
I thought that was like four or five foot.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're probably including the circular part around near that.
I don't know.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, we got a new container going out at Lisle Park. We can storm out there, right, Seth?
Come on, Seth. That's just what I was going to say.
I thought, I thought.
I beat you, Foselman.
Did you have, was that?
That was it.
Uh, I'll I think we should go ahead with it now and build them. And I'm, when you, when I said the roundabouts, I wasn't, I was kind of joking, but not really. There's power in the roundabouts. They can be put in the roundabouts. Obviously, high visibility, so not going to have anybody usually, okay, in the middle of the roundabout messing with them. But I will, with the vandalism concern too, I mean, even when they get put onto the bridge, there's going to be vandalism, vandalism concerns with them there too. I mean, the, the Milwaukee Road Bridge, what, within the first week of it opened, it had, it got tagged. I mean, so it's going to happen. Local artists, yes, so um, Brian, did you have?
I, I was just going to say that the, the main, we wanted to come, we wanted to be proactive and come with a positive.
I, I was just gonna say that the, the main, we wanted to come, we wanted to be proactive and come with a possible option. So if the consensus of the council is that let's proceed with building them. We can schedule some time to, to further evaluate different options. Just to, because we, we, the, the option to do uh, movable art uh, was something that we, we brainstormed with Kara. And that was really the only option that we, at that time, the main, the main crux of the, the conversation was really, do we want to build it now? Um, or do we want to wait? So I, I, I don't, and I say that because we as staff don't want to put counsel in, in a spot. Where you feel like you have to make that decision now about where to put them. Um, we can go back and, and do some additional brainstorming.
We could land them against the wall in the library. There's some tall walls in there.
Yeah.
Uh, Seth, you better, you better get a bigger container. That's all I'm telling you.
Alright, anything else on that? If not, we'll go on to uh. Seeing nothing. Move on to the public forum. That's a time set aside, signing my glasses on. Time set aside for comments from the public. Uh, please understand that the City Council will not take any action on your comments at this meeting. Due to requirements of the open meeting law, but may so, do so in the future meeting. So anyone here want to address counsel this evening? I'm seeing none, so we will move on to counsel comments. Someone, oh, go ahead, yeah, come on up. Sorry, did not see. Please state your name and your address.
I am Alex Cruiser, twelve thirty, Seventh Street in Marion. I am a UTV owner and I like the ordinance that it's possibly going through. I like the draft. The only thing is, I'm a pretty handy guy and I like to make very many trips to Menards. And if we could maybe shift the boundary down to Oakbrook Lane or right on the shoulder of some sort. Because that is a wide shoulder right there, just to access Menards, so I don't have to drive my truck from my house to Menards seven times during a project. Just to save some fuel, you know?
I have those problems too.
Oh, yeah, it's terrible. It's terrible.
And to be honest, I thought the same thing, is maybe put it down a little further so someone could get to Menards, so. When we were talking about it.
Uh, that, and I actually did install my own turn signals on mine just because I wanted to be visible. So that's just my other comment on that, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alright. Oh, yes, sorry, the forum, forgot about those. Uh, so let's move on to council comments. We'll start at the end. I think you already used up all of your time.
I have used up my quota, thank you.
Nothing, Steve, no?
I, I do, I have a few things. Saturday is another exciting day in Marion for a couple of reasons. We have the market returns. Uh, for one, I, I also believe there is a uh, pancake breakfast.
Yep.
Right on Saturday morning, seven thirty. And um, we also. In the, that's right, in the depot. Um, and then also it is the kickoff for our ninth year. Um, thank you Parks as being a great partner on this, for our free community yoga out at Laux Park on the amphitheater. So we're entering year number nine. Last, the last couple of years, even with COVID and putting in the restrictions that we did. We've had over a thousand people during the summer that access that on Saturday mornings. So looking forward to um, bringing that back with our volunteer instructors. So let people know, all ages, all abilities welcome. So, and thank you also to Parks because um, our community garden, if you get a chance to check that out, it helps the food pantry. They've been very helpful in uh, making some adjustments with us. And also want to thank uh, Link County Master Gardeners, Randy Dussel and Phil Fister. Because they have, they built that structure. And then just um, this week installed the, the rain barrels and the downspouts, so we can collect the water on that. And if you come out tomorrow, two of my children will be doing labor and building a little bit of a wall on the backside of that, so earning their keep. That's all I got.
Thank you, Randy. Alright, I was gonna also mention the uh, Uptown Market Saturday, eight to noon. It's returning to City Square and then also on Seventh Avenue. Finally had that available, so that's fantastic. So there will be some road closures from twelve to ten, so everyone knows. Um, and yes, pancake breakfast. And then also out at Thomas Park, there's a creek cleanup. Uh, that's from. Gosh, ten to, thank you, ten to four. There'll be food trucks, um, a band, all kinds of stuff out there. And you help clean up the creek in that area on, in your creek in the Thomas Park area, so. I don't think I have anything else. Something else going on this weekend with Parks other than yoga? What else is there? Oh, yeah, the Billy Joel, that's Friday night, tomorrow night? It's Saturday night? Okay, so concert out at Laux Park, Billy Joel and uh, Elton John tribute. What time is that? Eight? No, seven, seven to nine? Seven to nine, I should will say. So I think that's all now. Uh. We are going into closed session, Ms. Atkins.
Your Honor, I make a motion to adjourn to closed session regarding land acquisition as permitted under section twenty-one dot five, one J. Of the Code of Iowa and exempt session as permitted under section twenty-one dot nine, twenty dot nine and twenty-one dot one seven of the Code of Iowa. Two separate measures.
Second. Has been moved and seconded to adjourn to closed session regarding land acquisition as permitted under section twenty-one point five, one J. Uh, the Code of Iowa and exempt session as permitted under section twenty-one point nine, twenty-one, twenty point nine, twenty-one point one seven of the Code of Iowa. Two separate measures. Can we get a legal statement, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code Section twenty-one point five, one J. And I also find the subject matter for the proposed exempt session to be permissible under Iowa Code Section twenty-one point nine, twenty point nine and twenty-one point seventeen.
Thank you. A roll call though?
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Ms. Menser?
Yes.
Mr. Sternen?
Yes.
We are adjourned to closed session and we will return to open session when we are finished. Thank you.